Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this Wednesday, October 26th, meeting of the Tallahassee City Commission. For those who are willing and able, I invite you to stand for the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Dear God, as we come to the end of October, we have special blessings on those in our community who have been touched by breast cancer. Help us as we continue to bring awareness and work toward prevention and cure. We ask for your wisdom and guidance as we consider the business presented before us this evening, that our decisions be made in the best interest of all our citizens. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Manager, Attorney, Clerk, thank you for having me.
all.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, are there any agenda modifications?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 5.01 was added to the agenda, and item 15.03 was deleted from the agenda and moved
I'm here to present an update on the Florida Jazz and Blues Festival.
to December 14th.
Great, thank you.
So grateful for all of your continued support, not only through this esteemed body, but
Commissioners, we're now at the point of presentations, and we've got Mr. John Brown here. I don't see him.
also through your leadership and involvement through the CRA.
Oh, he is here, okay. Mr. John Brown here, who will make a presentation on the Florida Jazz and Blues Festival, which
As many of you know, a small group pulled in a lot of community support to host the
I know a number of us took advantage of, and interested to hear your comments, John.
inaugural Florida Jazz and Blues Festival right at the Capital City Amphitheater in Cascades Park, September 23rd through the 25th. I mean, it was phenomenal in the sense of talent, just global talent. I have Scotty Bonhardt, and I'll try to pull him up briefly, just to say a couple of words before I depart you from this lectern. The Count Basie Orchestra, again, 18 members from across the globe. We had individuals that, you know, came in out from Japan. We had not with Count Basie Orchestra, but had somebody that was on tour in Germany the week before. Again, Marcus Roberts was on tour in Japan a couple of weeks before, and right here in Tallahassee, bringing their world-class talent to us. Brian Lynch in Latin jazz, Freddie Cole celebrating his 85th birthday with us, just phenomenal. Lady Bianca from the West Coast, just a huge blues artist. Mac Arnold, Mississippi blues child, one of the biggest blues artists in the world right now. The same thing with Shamika Copeland, a pregnant Shamika Copeland, it was just, I mean, wow, from the stage when she abandoned the microphone, and you could still hear her at the back of the amphitheater. It was, it was, it was something special. Sandy Acquia, 15-piece Latin jazz band, and Rebirth, historic band out of New Orleans, Grammy-winning, first Grammy-winning in their, in their genre, and they were right here to help close it out on Sunday evening. 20X over three days, a huge undertaking. Charles Atkins, again, Mississippi, just some live shots for you. Again, crowd interaction with Mr. Sip, just getting the crowd going on Friday evening. Again, our very own Marcus Roberts, just a jewel in our community. I told you about Shamika Copeland. Again, Count Basie, as many of you might know and heard me before, I'm a Tallahassee, Leon County boy, through and through, was born and raised right here on the south side of town, down in University Park, right behind Bethel AMU. So, one of the things that my wife and I talked about as Count Basie took the stage under the twilight on Saturday evening was, you know, I'm used to growing up and seeing talent like this in the confines of Ruby Diamond Theater, or, or, or under, under the umbrella, or under the structure of maybe Lee Hall at FAMU, but not in the open air. So, again, that's for you, the commission, to be commended to rebuild Cascades Park in a way, and, and to have an amphitheater so it can be open to the community, open air, just, just wonderful having this world-class talent right here in Cascades Park. Again, Freddie Cole celebrating, had never, a historic moment, had never played with the Count Basie Orchestra, so that was something special. Shamika Copeland, Selwyn Birchwood, which I understand the ladies liked a lot, a lot of selfies and pictures. And, again, Rebirth at the end, which was just amazing. I love Rebirth's spirit. I mean, in their contract, it basically says, "We do not do sound check." So they're just saying, "Well, you have your stuff ready, we'll show up, we'll rock." And that's what they did. I mean, would you see them, would you see them right there is basically what they showed up. They basically showed up, got out of the car, said hello, had a little dinner, and, and went out there and rocked the crowd. So that was amazing. I put some, I mean, there are hundreds of pictures we can show you. You know, you look at Time Magazine and see a picture of Elvis Presley, or Frank Sinatra, who Scotty played with before. You have these pictures in Time Magazine, or National Geographic, or whatever, these moments in time. And, again, one of the things with your support you allowed us to do is really just, you know, create some historic moments here. This is a picture of Marcus Roberts and Lindsey Sargent behind the scenes in the, in the grand room. I mean, it's really jazz lineage right here. If you don't know Lindsey Sargent, who played with the FAMU FSU jazz ensemble to open up with a tribute to, to, to the Adderlees. Lindsey Sargent is just, I mean, just a great talent. He is not only the music department chair at FAM, and used to be over jazz, the jazz department at FAM, he also conducts and writes music for the marching, for the incomparable Marching 100. He basically takes something off the radio and can put it into music that the students play. I mean, that's just a phenomenal talent, and right here, we have it right here in Tallahassee. So capturing him and Marcus Roberts, which, again, just Marcus is, you know, as you might know, you know, throughout the globe, just playing beautiful music with his wonderful talent. And here's a moment we captured behind the scenes, Marcus Roberts and Freddie Cole. Marcus is walking into the green room, and Freddie says, "Hey, that's, that's Marcus Roberts right there, so here's an opportunity." And later on, I understand, I didn't get a chance to see it, we were preparing for the next day, but I understand they got a chance to jam together at B-sharps, which never happened before either. So, again, these historic moments, too small to see, but we didn't want to leave anybody out. Just wonderful community partners, we couldn't have done it without all of them. Obviously, we have the City of Tallahassee and the Community Development Agency, Leon County Visit Tallahassee, a host of media partners, communications partners. Specifically, I want to mention, of course, Commissioner Ziffer's group allowing us to use digital boards, which is just, you know, from the beginning, being supportive, not only being at the kickoff, but allowing us to use those boards to get the word out to, to the community through Ziffer-Stansberry. Very grateful for that. And, again, the, the partnership with the City of Tallahassee from the beginning, had a very early discussion with the city manager, getting his support, and, and making sure that our direction was, was good and proper. So, very appreciative of your support, and Ms. Barber, Cynthia Barber, and her team, and your assistance, assisting us through this process. Couldn't have done it without City Communications, City and Parks and Recreation were phenomenal. I think I saw Ashley in the audience somewhere, but in addition to Ashley, obviously Jessica Brown, working with her on a daily to make this work. You all have a jewel in Jessica that, that works on a daily to make sure we can have Cascades as a host, host such a, such an event at Cascades, and Mario, and everybody else. And, of course, from the CRA standpoint, Roxanne, and Rick, and Sheri, and, and everybody, I'm sure I'm missing names, just grateful for their continued support and, and helping guide us through that process. And also Wayne Teller, which I also saw, very grateful for his support in helping us through this process. Again, won't get into all the media and promotional partners, but from the beginning, having large support from WCTV, and Cumulus, and the Democrat, and the Capital Outlook, and just on and on and on. We couldn't have done it without the promotional and media partners helping us spread this word throughout the community. So we took an approach through digital, social, print. I know that's something that Commissioner Miller said from the beginning, "Hey, get on out there, tell the world." So, we did our best to get it out there. Again, you heard me talk about digital outdoor throughout. Again, partners with the Democrat in so many ways, Mark Henson from the beginning, Skip and his team, William Hatfield, ads also in the Capital Outlook, and St. Clair, and everybody over there assisting us in getting the word out to all of the community. And this is something, just briefly, I want to speak about. You might have heard us talk about this. This was a very important part of this. I mean, Scotty said from the beginning, obviously, Scotty, if you didn't know, the secret sauce here, two-time Grammy-winning jazz trumpeter tour, the current director of the Count Basie Orchestra, but he's also a professor. I call him a visiting professor because he's here some of the year, and he's traveling the globe the rest of the year. But, but at, at heart, Scotty is a professor and wants to make sure that the students are taken care of, and not only we're hosting this wonderful event in our community, but making sure that the young talent coming up also has an opportunity to maybe take steps of this in the next, in the future. Scotty has a relationship with Mr. Sam Beeler out of the Bay Area in California. He runs the Unity Music Foundation. He made a commitment to $11,000 of student scholarships in our community, four $1,000 at FSU, three $1,000 at FAMU. These are students that are, have this money already. Leon County Schools, two, two students through Leon County Schools, and also Fairview Middle School, and also Quincy Shanks in Gadsden County of $1,000. Scotty called one day and says, "John, I need some more hotel rooms," which is not something you want to hear when you already have a lot of hotel rooms for artists. I said, "Absolutely, Scotty, what do you need?" Basically, he found out that Sam was not only sending the money, but he was bringing the money with him. So, basically, he flew into Atlanta, picked up Scotty's parents, and brought them to Tallahassee for the festival. I think that's pretty special, that somebody would not only contribute, but want to be a part of this, and we think this relationship can continue to build and grow from here. So we're very grateful to have his involvement. The relationship with Coca, not only through their partnership with WTXL, as well as the Tallahassee Democrat helping us get the word out into the community, as well as helping us through that process with the student scholarships, create that process and facilitate that process, and make that process efficient, so we can get information out to students. I said, "City CRA love, making sure from the beginning that we just had, making sure that people are aware of how we did this, and we couldn't have done it without the great support of Leon County, and the City of Tallahassee, and CRA." So we wanted to make sure throughout, whether that be the program, or the flyers, or the posters, or, or whatever information that was out in the community, that we made sure that people are aware that we couldn't have done it without our great community partners. So we are grateful. And, Scotty, do you want to say a couple of words? There you go.
Thank you, everyone. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, and Commissioners, and everybody. It was a real pleasure to be right at the beginning of this festival, and as I told John, my goal from, from the get-go was to make this one of the best jazz and blues festivals in the world, not just the state, not just the region, not just the hemisphere, but literally the world. And I've been very fortunate to go and play hundreds of them around the world over the last 25 or 30 years or so, and I know what makes them work, and I know what makes them fail. And I can tell you, the start that we've already gotten with John and our team has just been unbelievable, and the support that you've given, and the support that everybody who's been a part of it has given, has just been really great. And I really want to thank you again, really. And one of the main things that I'd like to say is that all of the artists that came here are still contacting me. They loved it, they loved the city, they loved the food, they loved the meeting the other artists, they loved just everything about what they were experiencing when they were here. And that's what you want when you have world-class artists going to any type of a festival. So, we're already working hard for next year, and believe it, I think we only had three or four months to plan what we just pulled off. Now we have a year. So my goal is to make it bigger and better, and I already, just every other day, I'm getting inquiries from musicians that I haven't even met yet that have heard about this festival, that want to come play here. And lastly, this past weekend, I was in New York, we had a concert at the Apollo Theater, and Sam Beeler was there, and we met again, and he wants to contribute more money next year for more of the students. And I can tell you, I took him over to FAMU to meet the students that he gave that money to, and the look on those students' faces, one of them who was literally about to get put out of school because of her, because she couldn't afford it. What that, what that did to him, and to me, and to all of us, just made us even more committed to doing what we can, to not only bring in great music here, but to do something for the students. And, and I think what we would like to do is challenge any other businessmen that are in the city to chat, you know, to meet Mr. Beeler's, meet what he's doing. I mean, he doesn't even live in Florida, he lives in California, but he's coming here to do that, and that's a big deal. So, we're going to keep doing what we can, and make this festival bigger and better, and the community, I think, is just in for a great treat for many years to come if we can keep doing it. So, thank you very much for having me, and I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Scotty and John. Just want to applaud. You all pulled off a tremendous feat. Every time I heard you talking about it, I kept thinking in my own mind's eye, they're talking about 2017, right? 2017, right? And no, it was just, fast forward a few months, and you all were able to pull off such an impressive lineup. The participation was great even on such, you know, short notice, and the ability to pull in that, that caliber and range of sponsors and supporters says a lot about the, the effort you all put into making this happen. And I truly believe that this could be one of the, the best jazz and blues events, certainly in the southeast, but, but likely in the country. So, thank you again for your work. Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, John, I told you I was betting on you.
Yes, ma'am.
Did well. What I wanted to talk to you about, you had that list of sponsors up here. I was hoping that you will have the ability to somehow convey all of what you've shown us to them in some way, maybe put together a 10- or 12-page report, or brochure, or full of pictures, just even making, putting all this on paper to make sure they see what you saw, and you share that enthusiasm with them, so that they'll be inclined to be there for you next year.
Yes, ma'am.
So that would be the only thing that I'd want to ask you to try to attend to that, and make sure they get a special follow-up report from you.
Indeed, indeed.
Perfect. Thank you very much, John. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Absolutely. Commissioners, we're now at the portion of the meeting for citizen input on agenda items. Treasurer Clerk, are there any speakers?
Yes, Mayor, we have several speakers tonight. The first will be Mayor John Marks on item 1301, Proposal for Management of Appalachian Ridge Technology and Learning Center. I was recently at a conference where a couple of mayors spoke, and they said mayors will always, for the rest of their life, respond to mayor, so.
Yes, they will.
Mr. Mayor and City Manager, first of all, one of the, the primary speakers here, and I would, she hasn't signed a speaker form, but she will sign one, and I would like for Christine Henry to please speak, and maybe after Christine, I'll have a few words. Christine Henry.
You want to restart the time clock for Christine? We'll do it that way. Christine.
And I'll ask her and our other speakers, if you'll give your name and address for the record, we'll appreciate it, and you'll have three minutes.
I guess if you're the formal mayor, you can call people from the audience and tell them to get on up and speak. Christine Henry, 3121 Pontiac Drive, Tallahassee, Florida 32301. Here on the behest of my president, Perry West, of the Greater Appalachian Ridge Neighborhood Association, and their ambition to settle out the ambition of the neighborhood revitalization plan that was adopted in 2000. The neighborhood has organized themselves, and they are ready to take on the responsibility of facilitating citizen service and technology learning at that facility. We thank the city for consideration of our proposal today. We thank you for passing our proposal today, and we look forward to making, I know, I'm very forward, we look forward to making that center realize the true meaning of what it was created for. Thank you very much for time to speak to you today, and I look forward to the proceedings.
Thank you.
We did have a video, I couldn't play it. We do have, okay, we do have a video.
Wayne, do you want to wait until the agenda item for us to?
Your call.
Because I'd be happy to have them come back up at that point.
My name is John Marks, 200 West College Avenue, City of Tallahassee, Tallahassee, Florida. I'm here in support of this particular item, of course, and we have developed a strategic relationship. I am the executive director, as well as founder, I guess you can say, of the Jane and John Marks Foundation. It is a foundation dedicated to providing internet-related services to what we call underrepresented communities, or underexposed communities. We don't use the term underserved or unserve, we don't like that term. But we are providing internet-related services to those from a different standpoint. And there is a video that we have that kind of tells what the foundation is about, and it might be appropriate, if you don't mind, to show it right now, if, if, if there's no objection. Wayne, somebody help me. This is a video produced for us, that I produced, or that was produced on behalf of the foundation, just to give you an idea of why the foundation is here, what happened, and why we, why we're doing it.
I need somebody from, uh...
Can't get the sound, or get it going. Didn't sound good, please.
Of course.
As a youngster, John Marks the fourth learned that many kids were not exposed to computers as he had been. In the following years, he discussed with his parents how to expose kids to computer technology. As his dad, John Marks III, began transitioning from being mayor of Tallahassee, they discussed the idea of creating a foundation to foster their dream of exposing young people to technology career opportunities. Bringing computer technology to underserved communities was underway with the Jane and John Marks Foundation.
The mission of the Jane and John Marks Foundation is captured in our motto, creating creators and initiating innovators. And we're doing this by bridging the least familiar of the digital divides. I am very proud of our team and the success of our initial tech-wise coding camp. This is just the beginning. We have a lot more work to do. We will work tirelessly to ensure the face of the technology industry reflects today's ever-changing society.
We are all acutely aware of the digital divide and its unfortunate impact on certain individuals and communities. I see so much potential among the underexposed young people in this country, and through the Jane and John Marks Foundation, we will make a difference.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
That's it. And we are partnering with the neighborhood revitalization individuals in Appalachian Ridge, and we'll be a part. It is their project, however, we will facilitate them in this effort. Want to thank you very much, and anything you can do, any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that, Mayor Marks.
Next speaker, Mayor, is Jim Cruz, speaking on item 1302, which is the update on the Myers Park Noise Mitigation Wall. Have several other speakers, but all of the remaining speakers are on that same topic.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Jim Cruz, C-R-E-W-S, and I live at 1816 Atlantis Place, citizen of Tallahassee. I'm here on the Myers Park issue on your agenda today. My wife and I went over this morning and did a little walk around the building and so forth, and then went for a walk in the park, the larger park. When I entered the Recreation, Parks and Recreation Department building, what I call Altrules Building, there was a placard there that had something on it that I'd never realized, and that was that that building is the sesquicentennial building for the 150th anniversary of Tallahassee being the capital of Florida, not the 150th anniversary of Tallahassee. So, that to me is a big deal, and that automatically makes this building a historic building, a significantly historic building, building for Tallahassee, and I'd hate to see it disappear. As a former elected official, and I'm sure all of you have done this, I probably went to 50 or 75 meetings in that community room as just a citizen. I've gone there for different organizational meetings. It's...
My name is Jim Cruz, C-R-E-W-S, and I live at 1816 Atlantis Place, citizen of Tallahassee. I'm here on the Myers Park issue on your agenda today. My wife and I went over this morning and did a little walk around the building and so forth and then went for a walk in the park, the larger park. When I entered the Parks and Recreation Department building, what I call Al Truel's building, there was a placard there that had something on it that I'd never realized and that was that that building is the sesquicentennial building for the 150th anniversary of Tallahassee being the capital of Florida, not the 150th anniversary of Tallahassee. So, that to me is a big deal and that automatically makes this building a historic building, a significantly historic building for Tallahassee, and I'd hate to see it disappear. As a former elected official, and I'm sure all of you have done this, I probably went to 50 or 75 meetings in that community room as just a citizen. I've gone there for different organizational meetings. It's really, really nice and easy to use. Regarding the building itself, it has unique architecture, especially when you go back to the time when it was built. The architect was Al Truel, Albert Truel. I'm sure some of you know him. And he has a number of other places in town, some residential, some commercial, that stand out, a church out on North Meridian Road, Lutheran Church. Go in and walk around sometime and see what it looks like. While Trish and I were walking around, we saw the sign, of course, across the street that is the Myers Park Historic District. To me, that's important. That's rare in Tallahassee. It's hard to get that designation. As you walk through that neighborhood, you'll see why they got it. So, that is sort of the next-door neighbor here, right across the street, and that should be taken into consideration about anything that's done on this particular parcel.
Excuse me, that's your three minutes.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next speaker.
Next speaker is Robert Clay, followed by VJ Connor.
I wrote my name at the top so I wouldn't forget this time. I'm Robert Lincoln Clay. I live at 1303 Broome Street. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for taking my comments this afternoon. I am the Vice President of the Myers Park Neighborhood Association. At the September meeting about a month ago, a little more than a month ago, I read to you our position statement that was crafted based on the input of about 45 residents that attended the meeting, residents from both Woodland Drives and Myers Park. And I read you that statement at that time. I won't bore you with that again today, so I'll just summarize a few of the salient points. First is that green space is one of the defining characteristics of our community. It gives Tallahassee a competitive advantage in this state. I would suggest that we would want to hold on to all the competitive advantages that we have. Another issue about green space is that once it's gone, it's very hard to get it back and it's very difficult to recreate it. The Recreation and Parks Office, as Mr. Cruz just stated, is a dedicated city structure. It was architecturally crafted by the architect to fit into that surrounding. It's heavily used, as Mr. Cruz mentioned and as the staff report mentions, and it's a part of our legacy and as such should be respected as a part of our legacy. Current city policy, Cruz, precludes the sale of property that is presently in use. We believe that policy should be respected and the precedent set there should be respected. The stewardship of our public land and facilities is part of the public trust that you all hold, and I know you take that seriously. We believe that the public trust is very important and this land that we share as a community is very important and that should be very heavily weighed in any decisions regarding the disposal of this land. Regarding zoning, zoning in the comprehensive plan, as we pointed out in the position paper, we believe constitutes a fiduciary responsibility between the city governance and the property owners. And we do believe this is an important responsibility and should not be ignored. Lastly, we believe that the zoning change that would be required for this development is not in keeping with the area, is not consistent with any of the abutting land uses and is out of character for the area itself. We'd also point out that there is other land in the region or the vicinity, within a half a mile or so, that is appropriately zoned for higher density use, and we would welcome any neighbors on appropriately zoned private land. Thank you for taking our comments.
Next speaker is VJ Connor, followed by Rebecca Metcalf.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Connor. I live at 534 Oakland Avenue and Mr. Cruz and Mr. Clay just took my speech. But not completely. They did a fine job. This is the most serious question facing the Myers Park Historic District in its 90-year history. It is the city's only residential historic preservation district. A residential historic preservation district is decided, is defined in the land code, the Land Development Code of Tallahassee, as a district that has an underlying low-density residential density zoning. The proposal to upgrade this is in defiance of that definition. And it should not be. There is no need, there is no compelling reason to do this. The green space itself is a character-defining feature of the Myers Park Historic District. It's not next to the district, it's in the district, it's part of the district. It was included in the district by the consultant, a very fine, excellent consultant who drew the map because it is character-defining. That's why people came here. That's why they moved out into the country in the 1920s. That's what we're trying to preserve. The state guidelines for historic preservation say that to radically change a green space or a landscape or a building in a historic neighborhood that diminishes its character is a wrong thing to do. This doesn't diminish the character of Myers Park Historic District, it destroys it. Not only does it destroy it, it sets a precedent for higher-density development throughout the neighborhood in defiance of the Land Development Code. It also sets a terrible precedent for every downtown neighborhood and every downtown green space. I'm sure developers would love to develop some of our other city green spaces. I can name a whole bunch of them. And I'm hoping that you will see your responsibility as we all do, which is to protect the future of the country, of the community. I know you want to do the right thing for the community and that is, in this case, to protect this green space. Downtown green space is irreplaceable. It's next to a beautiful park, but it's a small park. And as people come to that park and as people move into the residential areas around that park that you're getting ready to create under proper zoning that's already in place, that green space is going to be ever more valuable to the community. If there's not a perceived need for it now in the part behind Parks and Rec, which is somewhat underused, there will be later. Don't part with it.
Excuse me, your three minutes have expired.
The only thing I want to say is, again, about the Parks and Rec building. That building is exactly what Mr. Cruz said it was and what Link said it is. It is essential. It is used, we love it, it is not surplus and you don't have a process to sell it. So, thank you very much and thank you very much.
Next speaker is Rebecca and I believe it's Ronald Metcalf.
Rand Metcalf. Can we have, we have a lot of times.
There are two of you. We'll have three minutes each.
And I'm Rebecca Metcalf.
We live about four blocks each house and street. Every home is within walking distance of both Cascades Park and Myers Park.
And we live, our house is directly behind the oldest house in our neighborhood, the very original plantation house for the Historic District.
Now, we are very close to Cascades Park, so we know the noise issue. We thought it was decided to build a wall, but I read in the paper over a month ago that it was decided the wall would cause too much. So, we proposed a demise of beautiful buildings for the Park and Rec Administration Office to improve a housing project and rezone that area.
Okay, and I have a written statement because I had too many plaques to remember. Okay, so what I wrote is, this 20-acre Parks and Rec parcel is bordered on three sides by the Residential Preservation II Zone of 376 acres and the fourth side by Royal Tracks and Cascades Park. According to the city and county zoning charts in Tallahassee Land Development Regulations Report, the primary function of PR2 designation is to protect existing stable and viable residential areas from incompatible land uses and density intrusions. No development in the Residential Preservation District shall be permitted, which violates the provisions stated in the 2010 Comprehensive Plan. Further, it says, "Applications for rezoning to any and all of the Residential Preservation Districts shall include a review to ensure compatibility with existing and surrounding residential type and density." I interpret this to mean that if you follow through with this rezoning, it must be compatible with the surrounding RP2 zone. Rand and I feel that rezoning this parcel would negatively impact the historic neighborhood with noise, human density and through traffic, which according to your own land use reports cannot be changed. I think this proposed rezoning of the Parks and Recreation Administrative Office parcel embedded within a larger Myers Park PR2 zone is an important issue for many in Tallahassee. The proposal not only affects inhabitants of the historic and protected zone, but also impacts any Tallahassee resident concerned about the permanence of zoning designations. The lack of publicity for these proposed changes lends an air of secrecy to the whole venture. I have always admired the city of Tallahassee for its proactive and generous nature and I'd hate to have my feelings tarnished by feelings of underhandedness. Thank you.
You do propose to go for a demise of the Park and Rec Office to grow a housing project. It would dramatically affect our neighborhoods and the community.
Thank you. The next speaker is Wings Benton. Then followed by Kevin Haddaway.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Wings Benton. I live at 1404 Golf Terrace Drive in the Myers Park Neighborhood. And may it please the commission to hear me today. My request is simple. First, please, please do not sell city public green space that is owned by the city. It's a treasure. And the second part of that treasure is the Park Administration Building, which I live two blocks away from, which I'm proud of on behalf of the whole city, not just because I live in that neighborhood. This summer, I visited Columbus, Indiana, because my husband was eager to see the architecture in Columbus, Indiana. It has many landmark structures there. It's famous because public buildings in Columbus were designed by famous architects with a vision. The architect who designed the Myers Park Administration Building, Al Truel, was my neighbor and I'm sure many of you know him and remember him. He probably attended many, many city commission meetings. He was a civic-minded private citizen. He was responsible for the historic preservation of the First Presbyterian Church downtown. He was called upon to design many architectural structures with a historic vision and purpose. And he designed this Park Administration Building to fit in to the park and it does, it's a jewel. So, I want to ask you to please preserve that and perhaps even call it the Albert Truel Building because it deserves that and there's nothing like it anywhere else. I've never seen a public park building that looks as spectacular as that. And in conclusion, please don't miss the opportunity to continue to assemble a wonderful, wonderful central park made up of both Cascades Park and Myers Park. You have an opportunity there to further the wonderful things you've done with Cascade Park. And as a person who lives two blocks from Cascades, I thank you for that. I remember when children could not play there, my own children could not play because of the environmental cleanup that was necessary. And now, I have a smile on my face whenever I drive by and see the children playing there and the throngs of people enjoying that park. Let them spread out and enjoy all of Cascade Park and Myers Park and keep that beautiful building that we call the Truel Building. Thank you.
Kevin Haddaway and then Mary Frederick.
Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Haddaway. I live at 1456 South Gadsden Street. Myers Park and I go way back. I know most of you commissioners and the mayor and all of you know that I'm a Realtor. I've been a Realtor for 27 years now. And I first moved into Myers Park back in 1986 before I ever considered being an agent. I thought it was a really beautiful neighborhood. I saw the neglect that it had, you know, received and kind of the, I don't know, the lack of energy and focus from the 70s and 80s in that area. The first house that I bought in the neighborhood was on South Gadsden, just a block from where I live now. I bought that house back in 1986, as I mentioned to you. That house sold last year for triple what I paid for it back in 1986. So, that tells you what has happened in that neighborhood over that timeframe. We talk a lot about sense of place in our city and our neighborhood is absolutely one of the best senses of place in our city. I was one of the individuals who helped with the historic preservation overlay that we have now in place. Again, as you know, it's an extremely unique situation, one that is only found in Myers Park in our city. Yes, we have multifamily in our neighborhood. That's okay. We deal with it. I personally own property over in Lafayette Park that is multifamily and now because that property has been damaged, can't replace it with multifamily, just like they were alluding to with the other properties that we have in Myers Park. You know, that's part of the character of the neighborhood and we're okay with that. But I don't understand how you can take nine and a half acres of our historic overlay that belongs to the city, that's part of our park system, our award-winning park system, and sell it for redevelopment. I mean, where is the common sense in that? I'm sorry, I don't see it. We've got property on the north side of Cascades that is just sitting there waiting to be redeveloped. Don't get me started on the FSU property that was transferred and the Firestone, that's a whole totally different, you know, argument and discussion. But those areas are appropriate for what you're proposing. They are inappropriate for the property that we are discussing tonight. How we went from a sound barrier, which I'm, again, not completely convinced that's the best option for noise mitigation for our area either, to redeveloping this and to, you know, multi, multi, multifamily development, you know, with single-family homes and the negative impacts. I mean, we've already been.
Excuse me, your time's expired.
Impacted by Cascades. I love the park. I'm excited about taking my niece and her husband to the amphitheater Friday night for the TSO Spontacular Concert. Great event, family-oriented, can't wait for it. That's the kind of thing that we need and that's the kind of thing we want from Cascades. We don't need hundreds of more residents sitting in our historic district. Thank you.
Thank you. How much more, how much more time?
We have one more speaker on this item and this. We have one more speaker on this item, and then one more speaker on 1301, and that's all I have. Mary Frederick on this item, and then Perry West will be the last speaker as far as I have forms.
My name's Mary Frederick. I represent Woodland Drives Neighborhood Association. I'm the president. It's 400 homes strong, and it's to the east of Cascades Park. I've emailed each of the commissioners our position statement on this. We are against the development of this park's land. We don't see the precedence. We find that it's a very dangerous precedence. I won't bore you with the details. The speakers before me did a great job. Thank you so much. I do want to, I have to quote my most favorite songwriter in the world, Joni Mitchell, "You don't know what you got till it's gone. Don't do this to this parkland." The association believes that the sale of public land is a violation of the public trust and should not be approved. The Myers Park and Woodland Drives Neighborhoods met in August. There was approximately 100 people in attendance. Not one person was for this development. Like Kevin said, I don't understand how we came from a sound wall to development of this land. I don't see the connection at all. I don't think that any acoustic engineers were brought in. I think this is just a crazy idea that somebody had. We encourage all city commissioners to protect the Myers Park and Woodland Drives Neighborhoods by only permitting passive and recreational development of the parcel in question, thereby serving the greater good of the community. Jeanne Connor, who was up here before, she did want me to mention, because she forgot it, and I have time, about the wall. Restrictions on walls and fences are standard in historic districts because streetscapes are important features. Fences should not block the facades of historic buildings. There are no historic homes in the green space near the proposed site of the wall. Sound walls, however, are common along the edges of historic districts. Moreover, a wall is compatible with the Comprehensive Plan, which calls for the protection of historic resources from noises generated by efforts to encourage tourism. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Perry West, speaking on item 1301.
Good evening, commissioners, mayor, to everyone in the dais here today. We want to, first of all, I'm Perry West, president of the Appalachian Ridge State Neighborhood Association, or the Greater Appalachian Ridge Neighborhood Association, 934 Cochrane Drive, and on behalf of our neighborhood, and we do have a couple of our residents here, in support of our proposal and our plan that we are presenting to you today, and we want to go ahead and thank you for your support and helping us to realize and to achieve the things that we initially started out in 2001. As you know, that was originally a plan of ours to be a sustainable neighborhood, to be a vigorous and surviving neighborhood, and to meet the needs of our residents and our people. Well, through a series of events, such as the recession and the downturn of the housing market, it became much more challenging. And on a more personal note, some of you may be aware that the tragic loss of my daughter in 2008, it took a lot of wind out of our sails. And so it became much more challenging. But since then, our neighborhoods come together. We're starting to reengage the neighborhood, and a part of this plan would be a significant and a centerpiece of helping us to realize those dreams, not only in Appalachian Ridge, but also the surrounding community. We want to be not only a progressive neighborhood, but a model neighborhood that shows how neighbors can come together and be not only in support of each other, but be engaged partners, engaged business partners like we're doing with the mayor and his foundation, but other partners, and bringing them to the table to help meet the needs of the residents. And so I want to thank you again for your support, and we look forward to continue working and doing what we can to be the model neighborhood in the city of Tallahassee. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right. Thank you to all of the speakers. We appreciate you taking time and coming out. Commissions, we're now at the portion of the meeting for appearances by appointed boards and committees of the government, and we have a report presentation, rather, this evening from the Tallahassee Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, presenting their annual report for approval by the city as well as the county with the Oasis Center for Women and Girls for administrative support and on the commission of status of women and girls. I believe Ms. Haley Cutler will be making the, and Sharon James will be making the presentation.
Thank you, mayor, commissioners, and others on the dais. I'm here to encourage your acceptance of our annual report, and will be making a very brief presentation of that report by summarizing our activities for the 2015 through 2016 program year. You all have been provided with a written copy of the annual report, so I won't read from it verbatim, but I do want to highlight a few things this evening. Our commissioners have worked tirelessly this year to, and we've really had a very successful year. I want to thank them for all of their hard work. We have a few of our commissioners here this evening. If you are a commissioner, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like for those commissioners The commission organizes itself in committees. We have four committees, a Community Engagement and Advocacy Committee, the Status of Girls' Report Committee, Marketing and Communications Committee, and the Org and Bylaws Committee. We deemed this year the Year of the Girl, and it was our focus to really take a look at the barriers that are impacting girls in this community while also celebrating the successes of girls and providing them with the resources that they need in order to move from where we find them today to where they would like to be as young women. One of our first activities was a series of community conversations where we spoke with 87 girls at 13 sites throughout the city of Tallahassee and Leon County. We really believe that in order to be able to assist girls and move them forward, we needed to hear their voices. And so we were able to do that through community conversations. We also have a speakers bureau, and this year we spoke to college students as well as professional associations about the work of the commission. We really wanted to highlight the successes of girls in this community. I'm sure many of you know, but the girls in this community are doing amazing things. And so we were able to highlight a number of them and will continue to do so. We were able to really focus on an individual girl per month. We recognize an elementary school student. We recognize middle and high school students during the Year of the Girl. We're also very pleased, and I really want to take a moment to thank you all and the city of Tallahassee for your support. On September 23rd, we had the Year of the Girls Summit. That summit was hosted by you. It was hosted by the city of Tallahassee, and we had a number of girls here, about 100 girls and 50 women. And I want to take this time to also recognize Patricia McCray, who was a jewel in terms of our ability to really pull this off and have an impact on the girls in this community. We had a series of sessions where the girls had an opportunity to talk amongst themselves and also to hear from some of the resources that are available to them in the city of Tallahassee. Some of the workshops included information about being their authentic self, leadership, healthy relationships, planning for college. And we were also pleased to have as a special guest speaker the city's first lady, RJ Gillam. She was very well received by the girls and did an amazing job in connecting with them. Just a few more things to highlight before we take our seats. We are working on a Status of Girls Report. I think many of you are aware that the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls is known for our quantitative research and the reports that we're able to provide this community. We are working on a report that's entitled the Status of Girls Report, and we will be publishing that in a magazine-style format within the next several months. We're exploring issues related to behavioral health, physical health, education, safety, sexual violence, and social media. And it's our hope that this particular resource will be used by not-for-profits and government organizations like the city of Tallahassee, Leon County, and Leon County Schools. We're also working in partnership with an organization based in Ohio to bring to our local community a Girls Index. This is a survey that will be implemented within the city of Tallahassee. We'll be surveying girls to find out exactly where they find themselves. We're really wanting to find out more about the pressures that girls have. We want to find out more about their self-esteem. And so we'll be working with Leon County Schools over the next several months to disseminate this survey, and we'll be bringing back to you all the results from that survey as The last thing I'd like to highlight is our efforts at strategic planning. I believe I presented a few months ago our efforts to engage in strategic planning. We have been able to accomplish that. We've had a number of very successful and enlightening sessions, and I'd like to thank City Commissioner Curtis Richardson for his participation on our strategic planning working group. We will also be coming back to this commission to present that strategic plan to you. As we look ahead to 2016-17, I'd like to take a moment to introduce our new chair, Paula DeBose-Johnson, that will share a few additional highlights. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, thank you all so much for your support of the commission on the Status of Women and Girls. I am excited to lead this amazing group of phenomenal women. We have an exciting year planned. Sharon has highlighted the most stringent points, I think, for us, and I just look forward to a more closer collaboration with you all and look for all of the great things that will come from our group this year. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And I'm sure my colleagues may have other points, but just want to acknowledge and thank you all for not only the quantity of work that you all put out, but the superior quality of work that you produce. A number of us refer to you all's reports and indexes throughout the year, not only as we're talking about issues specific to girls, but larger community issues because issues of women and girls impact and drive a lot of what happens in the greater community. I heard great things about the conference. I understand my colleagues, Commissioner Richardson and Commissioner Miller, were also there, and Commissioner Miller invited the young women up to the dais to take pictures. And I understand from RJ, one of them noted that there was only one girl on the commission, so Nancy, you'll have to help do something about that. But really, high marks for the work that y'all have accomplished over this past year.
Thank you.
Of course. Commissioner Miller.
Well, I hope that I did something by inviting them up here so they can actually experience what it's like to sit out there and look at all of you and make these decisions. That was pretty much fun, and I was really glad they took me up on the offer. It was good. Given the discussion and some of the comments here, I'd like to say that you all are an incredible resource for input to us on issues outside of what you're particularly talking about, and I'd like to recommend and ask that staff looks to you when we are in the process of policy development on anything that is related to the status of women and girls, because you are our agent, our committee, and it's a very impressive committee, I'd like to add, that is really putting together exceptional work, and I think you are uniquely qualified to give us input on other topics relating to women and girls as they arise in our inbox, so to speak. So I'd like to ask that of staff and that of you also. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ziffer.
The index that you spoke of, that you're going to try to do this coming year, how often do you think you'll do that?
This is a national study, and we've been asked as a community to participate. Depending on the results that we receive, I think that there is room for us to have further conversation with the entity that's actually commissioning the study to do it more often, but we anticipate doing it this one time.
Because it seems to me, and I don't know what something like that costs, but if you did it maybe not every year, but every couple of years, at least then you have your baseline, just to see where people's attitudes are and how, as you said, self-esteem and other issues, particularly considering this past election cycle. I would be really interested to see how things like that impact, because I think those are things that we need to be cautious of. So I would be interested in, and I'm not sure about the rest of the commission, but being supportive of getting kind of a read on a regular basis of what the mood of particularly women and girls are in the community.
I think that's a great idea, and we will take note of it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I also want to congratulate you on that, on your partnership with Dr. Hinkelmann. I understand that y'all are distinguished in having been sought out to participate in that research. And then, and I'm sure you all have already thought of this and are already doing it, but although you're the city and the county commission on the Status of Women and Girls, you are probably the foremost feedback mechanism that any of our institutions locally might have on women and girls. And so getting this back into the hands of school board members and the superintendent, I think, is also, and then obviously down from there, administrators, teachers, and staff at schools is also really, really important. Commissioner.
On that note, do you, I know you probably present to the county commission, but do you also have the opportunity to present to the school board? Because I think that would be a really good opportunity.
We do not routinely report to Leon County Schools, but that's something that we believe is a great idea and has come up in our strategic planning discussions about furthering that partnership with them.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you all again very much for your work. Commissioners, we're now on to the consent agenda. And there's one item. Is there a motion?
So moved. Approval.
There's a motion and a second on consent. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes for zero. Commissioners, we're now on to introduction of ordinances, and I believe there's only one ordinance for introduction. Is that right?
There are none.
Nope, there are no ordinance. I apologize. Policy formation, item 13.01, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. As you're aware, the city has been involved with the Appalachian Ridge Tech Center since its creation in 2002. Prior to the economic downturn, the center became a successful model geared towards helping youth in the community have access to technology and initiatives that resulted in their improved academic performance. Most recently, as funding commitments from the partners for the center were not renewed, the center's success has been severely impacted. Over the last year, we have been in discussions with the Greater Appalachian Ridge State Neighborhood Association, as well as the Community Neighborhood Renaissance Partnership, about the future of the center. This agenda item provides a recommendation on how to move forward with the tech center and recommends a proposal from the Neighborhood Association that provides a comprehensive approach for the center and meets the city's goal of finding a financially sustainable option for management of the center. Raoul is here to answer any questions regarding the proposal.
Commissioners, any questions, or is there a motion?
We have approval.
There's a motion for approval. And a second, want to thank those who presented earlier. Mayor Marks, obviously, thank you, and Jane, and the foundation for y'all's commitment and support. It's good to see the idea of the Renaissance sort of continuing under this new formation. Mr. West Perry, and to the neighbors, thank you all as always for stepping up and claiming ownership over all of the assets in your area and the influences in your neighborhood and community. I think the partnership, hopefully, will work out very successfully. Commissioner Miller.
Well, I wanted to say that I met Mr. West way back, you may not even remember this, but way back in probably 2003, when we put a rain garden in down at the center. At that time, it was really up and running, and I was completely sold for all eternity, and several staff people can vouch for the fact that when I began to run for office, I was saying, "We need to revisit. We need to revisit." So I'm really thrilled that you all have taken this on. When I was reading this agenda item, there were more than one application, and the other application suggested that seat two of our commission be tasked with fundraising for you, and what I would say is that that's not my seat, and all of us represent all of you, so all of us need to be tasked with that. Or Curtis can just take it on, Commissioner Richardson can just take it on alone, but, you know, I'd be happy to help too. I really believe in the center, and I really believe in the change that can come from a center like this. When it was up and running, there were adults coming there. They were being helped with resumes- resumes and, and all sorts of services that children were coming there after school to do their homework. There were computers. It was just as Mayor Marks has pointed out, I mean, a lot of people don't have computers in the home. So it's a, and there it was, right there in the neighborhood for people to come home from school and go to the center. Parents would know they were safe. It was just an all-around good effort. So I'm excited that you're taking this on. Certainly, somebody needed to grab hold. Yes, Mrs., Mrs. Christique is going to have her hands full, but she's very capable of organizing everyone and, and getting this done. So good luck and best wishes to all of you who are involved.
That's great. Commissioners, there is a motion and a sec. Kristique almost missed acknowledging you. Good luck, fellows, because Kristique knows how to drive you to, to real action. And that's a good thing. Everything she puts her hands on, she follows through with. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we're now on to item 13.02. Do you update on Myers Park noise mitigation? City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. This item is, provides additional analysis regarding the sound wall proposed on the city's property located where the city's Parks and Recreation Administrative Complex is located. Staff from multiple departments have assembled information, we believe, addresses the questions you asked at the June 20, 2016 Blueprint IA meeting. Additionally, staff is making a number of recommendations regarding noise mitigation and future use of the property. Wayne Teder is here to provide you a brief presentation and to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, City Manager. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Today's presentation really is about whether or not you want to move forward with a construction of a sound wall on the city's Park and Recreation Administration Complex. What I'd like to do is kind of start off with what we do know about Cascades Park. We all know that the park is an incredible asset to our community, very well utilized, good example from this past weekend. Thank you, Commissioner Miller, for your leadership for this event. But this, not only is the infrastructure that you have funded and supported throughout the years, created amenities for, a green space in particular for Myers Park Neighborhood, as well as all the other surrounding neighborhoods within the immediate area. Again, other infrastructure that you completed only serves to further protect, enhance those existing neighborhoods, and lift those neighborhoods up. I think you're going to continue, continue seeing those neighborhoods strengthening because of the infrastructure improvements that you've done out there. To this point, just to kind of give you a snapshot, kind of going back to the, the whole real estate, what is this doing to, you heard a little bit of this from Mr. Hattaway. There is a strong market in Cascades Park, in and around this area of Cascade, of the amphitheater, and where the noise impacts exist. What you see is just a snapshot of the land transactions that have occurred in 2015 and 2016, up to this point. Again, looking at just about any realtor's description of the properties out there, they utilize the downtown, they utilize Cascades Park for a selling tool for every property just about that I've seen on the market in the area. Kind of talking about, one of the things that I think is an exceptional component of an urban environment, an urban neighborhood, Myers Park is one of those things that planners talk about all the time, about where multiple uses can live in harmony with each other. And Myers Park is just one of those examples where you see the different colors between the brown and the tans, the yellows and the beige. Those are all different land uses that existed in this neighborhood for many years. And it is evident by the, the neighborhood that it's worth fighting for, to be quite frankly. So we have everything from single-family detached, single-family attached, duplex, and multifamily development in and adjacent to the site that we're talking about. Again, talking about densities, the mixed type of densities in these urban neighborhoods. The zoning lends itself to low-density residential, but what you have out there in the neighborhood existing is everything from low-density residential to very high-density residential, up to 20 dwelling units per acre. So within the existing neighborhood, you have that mixture, a very diverse of density intensities within that neighborhood. What we know about the wall, first and foremost, the primary purpose of the wall, when it was really conceived, was to start addressing the impacts from the local or house system, which is something that has many events throughout the year, many Saturdays, many Sundays, and even during the week. Very well utilized. What we also know about the wall is that it will provide a significant impact or benefit to folks who live in and around the Van Buren Street area. The study that was done by the sound mitigation expert basically said that, here's the map from that report. And when I looked at this report, it only appeared to be about 19 homes that really benefited from this, this sound wall that was a 30-foot-tall wall. Reality is, is when you actually look at the cone of influence, as I call it, there's really about 30 to 33 homes that would benefit from a 30-foot-tall wall. Now, when the Intergovernmental Agency approved the concept to move forward with the sound wall, I don't think anybody really realized the magnitude and the scale of this wall. When you're looking at a plan view in this perspective, you see a wall is located where the red line is. It's about 300 feet long. So that doesn't look very big on this map, but it's 300 feet long, which is a little more than a football field.
I have a question on this.
Then we talked about the clearing. It's about a half acre of land that would need to be cleared to provide a berm and allow for construction activities to construct this wall. I hesitated very significantly when I was writing this agenda by putting this illustration in. But to be quite honest with you, this was the only illustration I could find of a DOT sound wall of the scale that we're talking about. And what I did, I cropped a picture to basically represent about the length and the height of the wall that you would experience that was approved in concept by the Intergovernmental Agency. Now, to kind of put this thing in perspective again, the length would be about 20 car lengths or the, roughly the size of a football field. But the height, this room is 14 feet high from floor to ceiling. So if you can imagine a sound wall, it's going to be more than double than the height from floor to ceiling in this room. So it's a very, very big wall that would be constructed in this area, no doubt about it. Scale is very massive. Now, the, the way this site would have to be constructed with a wall, the site has a, it's got a tall hill on it, and then it slopes down to a low area. The wall would have to step down. So you won't see a horizontal wall like this. You'll see it high on the hill, and then it'll start curving with the land, moving towards the city substation. Now, there are some things that you can do to kind of soften up this wall as far as appearance. This is the same wall that you just saw, but on the other side of the wall, where the neighborhood folks said, "Well, let's plant some vines on there." It's certainly a more economical way to address it, but it's a long, would be a long process to get the entire wall covered with vines. There are more aesthetically pleasing, if you will, or artistic renderings of walls. For example, here is, I guess, the way the mold is built. It certainly is more expensive than what you have already approved, so there would be a need to come back and address funding for this type of wall. And for example, this wall, I believe, is about 12 feet tall. So kind of put that in scale with a 30-foot-tall wall. Now, what we know about the site, what I'd like to do is kind of walk through and talk about some of the good things about the site and some of the things that are impactful, if you will. And so I'd really like to start off with the good. And everyone's mentioned the Albert Truel Building. You hardly notice this building when you drive by it, whether it's by color, whether it's by scale, whether it's by landscaping, or whether, whether it's set back. You don't see this site because it's basically internally focused into the site. And what I mean by internally focused, really, the building is kind of set, and again, it's hard to see from just the colors out there, that this building is a U-shaped building, for lack of a better term, or a series of buildings, where they're focused inward towards a courtyard. It has really no relationship to the streetscape, because there's really no windows oriented towards the street. So the building is very internally focused from that perspective. One of the things I think is a tremendous asset of the site, this streetscape along Van Buren is just gorgeous. That is something I think is very, very important to maintain with any property. This building itself, every time I drive into the Parks and Recreation Administration facilities, something about this, just personally, I love this building, I love the way it fits into the site, could definitely be a key component for any type of future redevelopment if that occurs. The vistas from this site, I'm standing flat-footed, probably about 50 yards from the edge of the property line. Just a gorgeous view of your downtown area. And again, from another location of the site, very prominent views of your downtown. Now, as we kind of go through some of the things of the site, I think everyone mentioned the heavily utilization of the administration offices and buildings. I think overall, there's about 37 staff that travel in and out of this building on a daily basis. There's about 300, 330 vehicles, that includes carts, that utilize this site in some form or fashion. And over the last year, there were over 300, I think 388 or 366, I think it's 388, events or meetings that were conducted on this site. So it is a very well-utilized property. Now, when you walk around the site and you look at things that may be pretty impactful to that site, which quite frankly may not fit into the historic context of Myers Park, you look at what is the base of a 120-foot-tall communications tower. You have metal storage buildings that are located in the back with outside storage of waste containers. You have an office building, and I really don't know the history of this building, but it's utilized for a small office building for special event planning. Who capitalizes on this awesome view of this site? It's the parking lot. So, so from my perspective, it's really an awkward utilization of a parking, parking facility oriented towards the downtown. You have outside storage. You have another building, large storage building, a lot of this is maintenance equipment for Cascades Park. Again, the building really is not architecturally significant as far as fits into the architectural components of the neighborhood as I know it. You have a city well site. This is just two components of that well site. There's a building, if you can see the piece of brick behind it, there's also a brick component that is necessary for that well site. That must remain in place. That is a in use, in use today and must continue to be in use. You have things on the site, and again, I don't want to step on anyone's toes, but you were utilizing a chain-link fence, outside storage area, and a really beautiful area where you have large oak trees in around this area. This is kind of another view of that area. So outside storage, again, is not one of those things you see customary associated with a viable, stable neighborhood. But it's tucked away from the roadway. When you talk about comprehensive plan and zoning issues, when you look at the future land use map in the comprehensive plan, it basically says that the subject site, as well as the adjacent substation, is utilized for open space and recreation uses. Now, what that land use designation says is that it is intended to be used for passive and active recreation land uses. We know that this site is utilized for components that serve passive and active recreation uses, but it is not a passive and active used recreation site. Same with the city substation just to the west of it. Both of those, from a comprehensive land, comprehensive planning perspective, are considered legally non-conforming based on those types of issues and should be addressed regardless. When you look at the zoning, again, we went to the Land Development Code, working with the Growth Management Department. The zoning for the subject site is residential preservation too. Again, the types of uses that exist on the site out there today are legal non-conforming land uses. And what this really means is exactly what Mr. Hattaway said. If something was to happen to some of those buildings, your building official would not be able to give a building permit to put it back in its original place. So that's very important. That's another fact, when we get to, actually, let's go to the next slide, to address very specifically the same things Mr. Hattaway was saying. If we feel like this neighborhood is a viable, stable neighborhood with the uses that are in it, all of these red stars indicate legal non-conforming land uses. It's substantial. So all the types of investments people have in there, just like Mr. Hattaway, if a tree fell through it during a storm and damaged the facility more than 50%, they will not be able to build exactly what they have today. And you're taking away those development rights of those uses that have clearly been established for over 20 years in that neighborhood. I think a surgical approach, regardless, should be done to address these types of uses and to help people like Mr. Hattaway with those types of non-conforming land uses. When you talk about a wall, I clearly believe that there are better ways to do it if you feel like there is a wall necessary. Back, I want to say it was December, before December, during a staff meeting in the planning department, staff said, "Hey, why are we spending sales tax dollars?" And I believe it was been allocated $475,000 for a sound wall that may not fit in this neighborhood, when we know that folks have come to us and asked if the city is willing to sell this piece of property? Apparently, there are developers out in this community who feel like this is a valuable piece of land that is worthy of consideration for sale and purchase. This is just one example. It is not necessarily the right example. We've not taken it to the Architectural Review Board, but it is just one example of showing that you can have the same types of uses that already exist in the neighborhood and locate them throughout the site. Again, this would be something that would have to go through the Architectural Review Board for any type of consideration. So we think from a land use perspective, having development become the wall versus building a sound wall, you will deal with the aesthetics, you will deal with a cost issue, a reduced cost to you all, and it's a better fit for the neighborhood. If you're talking about the types of development that could become a wall, become the solid piece between those areas, these are brownstone developments that could very well fit in with the types of development that exist in Cascades Park, Myers Park today. There's just a couple of examples of things, characteristics, that I think are in historic districts that make, make up great communities. Doesn't mean it will look like this. But again, when you look at the potential of people who want to be a part of an urban environment, they're okay with overlooking the downtown, they're over, they're okay with being a part of the sounds that come out from Cascades Park. You can allow those folks to be a part of the sound buffer. Now, there's just a couple illustrations of examples of projects that people have, very much like a brownstone, the backside of these brownstones that could face into Cascades Park area. And again, the, the ability to look out into the downtown in a manner such as this would be a gorgeous opportunity for redevelopment. Now, going back to the whole reason that we're here today to talk about the sound wall, the primary purpose was to address those local events, your house events. What we have identified is two recommendations that we can implement immediately. Number one is reduce the hours of operation for the house system in the amphitheater area. What we have seen is that Saturday mornings, there could be an event that starts at 8:00. People are starting the, doing the mic test and all of that, 7:00 in the morning, 7:30 in the morning, using the house sound system on the stage when there's nobody out in the field present to hear it. When the crowds gather, they gather up on the hill, they don't gather close to the stage where they can keep the volume down low. So working with Ashley, she believes that you can locate some of these starting points, maybe differently on the site of Cascades Park. You can still have amplified sounds, but you can have them oriented away from the neighborhood and certainly not utilize the, the, the sound speaker that's on the stage itself. Again, another way to deal with sound issues into the neighborhood is in the night hours during the weekends at 10:00 rather than 11:00. So we feel those are two positive approaches that can be done to further mitigate sound from the Cascades Park. Lastly, and most importantly, at the end of the day, you will not be the ones that decide what is appropriate on this site or not from a land use perspective. You have an Architectural Review Board, which is exactly their charge, is to look at any development and all development that is in a historic preservation overlay district, and it is their duty and responsibility to make sure that any development on the site, whether it be a wall, whether it be redevelopment, whether it be any type of modifications on the site, must fit into the neighborhood historic fabric. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you very much, sir. Commissioners, any questions or comments? I'll just say, for me, on the, on the wall piece, and it could be too much talk of walls, I am, I don't know where I was and where my headspace was in voting in favor of this at the joint city-county meeting, but I think it creates a very, it's easy to say unnecessary, because I don't have to deal with, with noise mitigation, but certainly, I think... I think creates a very physical divide between some of the best assets that are going on in this area. And so, just want to be on record as saying, I don't support a wall and am looking forward to what options, I think, your recommendations on the, the sound testing, moving the sound up to match the weekend sound limits to the weekday sound limits will, will go some distance. We now have, you know, added event spaces in this city where folks can do sort of, I'm thinking of the Center of Tallahassee, obviously, the Civic Center still remains an option for, for concerts. So I don't think we're eliminating opportunities for concerts and concerts that go later into the evening, but certainly, these revisions will bring some additional level of moderation and lessen late-night and early-morning impacts to the folks who live, live in the area. But, you know, want to go on record as saying, you know, count me out of the, out of the wall. Commissioner Miller.
All right. Well, I was gonna let others go first since I have like five or six questions, but I'm gonna just go ahead and jump in. First of all, I wanted to make sure I understand exactly what our decision points are tonight. And what I understood, I mean, there's no development that we're, I heard a lot of references to a housing project and an air of secrecy, and I didn't quite think we were at that spot. I mean, I thought what we were doing here tonight was deciding whether we wanted you to go forward with a comprehensive plan amendment, which is going to require a year of basically all of that discussion, right?
Correct.
And then there's some decision regarding the wall on the property that you want an answer to tonight. Now, are those the two things that you want answers to tonight, or is there something else that I don't, I mean, other than going to the ARB and, and that kind of thing?
Under the conclusion portion of your agenda material, we have basically grouped recommendations into two different sections. The first section being, what can we do to the house system to reduce the impacts? Those are the first two bullets on the last page. And then lastly, there are four bullets under the city's property that basically direct staff to initiate a comprehensive plan amendment for the central urban with a CU-12 zoning, which limits the density to no more than twelve dwelling units per acre. Also, direct staff to initiate a comprehensive plan amendment on the city substation that really needs to be dealt with and gotten correct. Direct staff to initiate a pre-application meeting with the ARB. Again, they are charged with helping facilitate what fits on the site. We think running the process of having an RFP concurrent with a comp plan amendment provides predictability so that folks know what is occurring, consistent with a comprehensive plan amendment, rather than saying, hey, we're gonna amend the comprehensive plan, we don't know what we're gonna get. The idea is to marry those two processes along, so at July, when we're talking about adoption of any comp plan amendments, that you would also be able to see, if there were any responses to an RFP, you would be able to see what those would be bringing to the site.
All right. Well, now that's clear. I wanted to ask you a couple of things. On the, on the map that has the, I wish you could have combined several of your maps, but the map that has the contours, I think actually, it is the map that has the wall. Where you've got, you know, you had the red line, right, that one. All right, I know that you've got a flowway and some floodplain in here, and I want to know, if that's the case, what happens to that water after, if you put a wall there?
So if you notice the wall, you're still going to have to deal with the floodplain issues. In this particular case, there is a concept of taking a drainage pipe off to the side and collecting it. Whether or not the area is an altered area or not, that's yet to be determined, so any type of response would have to be clearly consistent with the city's land development regulations.
So you're planning on draining this and putting it in that spot down there somewhere?
The drain, as I understand, is kind of like an open ditch area that kind of runs through this area. The idea is to work it in and put it back into this ditch that runs along the railroad track.
Well, does it currently go under the railroad track?
No, it does not. It stays on the south side of the railroad track.
Okay. All right. My other question was, had to do with traffic?
Yes, ma'am.
Have you given any thought to, I mean, this would indicate more people, obviously, and so if you, what are you planning, I realize this is not a question relevant to what we're talking about tonight, but are you, is there, what are your thoughts about traffic management?
Connectivity would be very important. This concept that the Planning Department laid out had an access point on this side, which would capture most people coming through this way. Of course, there might be people that would drive through the neighborhood this way. There would also most likely need to be another access point on this side of the roadway. So there could be folks coming from South Monroe towards this area, as well as Monroe Street downtown this area.
All right. Well, we can talk more about that later.
We'll have to expand the maps to show you some typical travel routes.
All right. So you're planning on taking this, the wall to the ARB, is my understanding?
Well, the recommendation is to move forward with the comp plan amendment and an RFP for future redevelopment of the property. It does not include building a wall.
Have you had any conversations with them about the wall?
We have not.
One of the points in the letter raised the question of surplus property, and could you talk about that just a little bit, about our ability, basically, the definition of surplusing on, and that kind of thing?
And the city attorney may need to back me up a little bit. So surplus property, the definition of surplus means it's no longer in use. In this particular case, you have properties that are in use. So the policy is written to deal with those properties that are no longer in use, and we do that on a regular basis. You've seen that on a couple of examples recently. We still have a process to follow, and even though this is not deemed surplus property, we follow the same process that is established in that policy. So public hearings, public process, public notice, all would be required as part of that RFP process.
The triangle, I really would like to see the triangle off the table. Is that possible?
Everything's possible. It's your direction.
Well, I think, well, I agree with the neighbors in the fact that that isn't, that shouldn't change. I mean, that needs to be, no matter what happens to this property, that doesn't need to be considered part of the discussion. That's my feeling.
Okay.[1026.29][1026.29](APPLAUSE).
By the triangle, be aware, by the triangle, I mean, the triangle that's part of the neighborhood entrance and, and that particular, that has the plaque. Do you know which triangle I'm talking about?
It's just to the left of this area, or back behind.
Right. It separates the roads.
Could you pull that map up again? A map, any map.
This map would be great. See this product, see that little piece of land?
Mm-hmm.
All right, that's the one. Let me see, what else? Okay, I'm almost done.
This piece right up here.
So you are saying that the ARB is the one that makes the decision on this design?
That is correct. What you would do is facilitate.
That should provide a huge level of comfort to people. I have a concern, and it's not just in this neighborhood, but I have a concern always in the non-conforming issue piece of this. And I had no idea that we had this many people that were non-conforming, because people live in these places. If they are damaged, they are going to be out of luck. And that's, no matter what anybody thinks about this piece of property, the number of non-conforming uses here in your neighborhood are just threatening people's homes, in my feeling. Okay, so I think that's.
Commissioner Ziffer.
For many of the reasons that the mayor mentioned, the wall, for me, is just a nightmare. I mean, I know that it, it solves the sound issues, but I think once that thing, if it went up, then there'd be all sorts of, well, how are we gonna hide it? Because it's the ugliest thing I've ever seen, so we would have to deal with that. So I'm, I'm not in favor of that. This is difficult. I will tell you, today I drove around there a lot. And some of you remember that at one time, I was involved with another potential development that was in this area. So I would, I would argue, quite frankly, the redevelopment of Cap City Country Club was a far more drastic change impact on the neighborhood than this. This is, this is not in, this is, while it's in the historic preservation area, it's really not, it's not inside this neighborhood. It's not in the middle of it.
Yes, it is.
Okay, I was really quiet when everybody else spoke, so I'm gonna speak now, because I know that in national media and a lot of other places, everybody talks over each other, but we're not gonna start to do that here. Are we, commissioners?
No.
I don't think we are. So having said that, I've lost my train of thought. The conforming issues bothers me, I think, regardless of whatever happens here, we need to deal with that. And we have other neighborhoods. My neighborhood is the same situation, and there are other neighborhoods. And so I think at some point, we need to, as a commissioner, start to deal with that, because it's not only people live, people have made investments in their, you know, small apartment buildings and things like that, and none of those are really have possibility for rebuilds, so I think we need to deal with that. I would like to see the change in the hours. If we can do that, I think we should do that right away. I'm in support, and I'm gonna go ahead and move staff's recommendation with option one. I think this can be done. I think it can be done so that it fits in and it ties in well with the neighborhood. I think having the ARB eventually in the position to make some decisions as far as what gets approved and what moves forward is a protection for the neighborhood. It is not an easy decision, but I think it's the appropriate thing to do. So as I said, I'm moving option one.
Second. There's a motion and a second on option one. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I guess, you know, my, I mean, we can piecemeal this for this neighborhood, but, but what I'm tired of seeing, our neighborhoods having to come and fight for their very existence before this commission. We've seen Stern Street since I've been on this commission. We've seen the Glenview neighborhood. Lafayette Park is teed up. The area around Florida Avenue and Thomasville Road is teed up. I thought they would have been here tonight. I hear there's development being considered, maybe not in the near future, but certainly in the future. The, the, what was Alumni Village at FSU, the people in Callan are scared to death about what that's gonna do to their neighborhood, and it's unfair to, to these neighborhoods to be put in this position. You know, one of the things that, that Tallahassee has touted as one of its most precious amenities has been its neighborhoods. And people, before all the explosive growth started in this community, chose to live in those neighborhoods and invested in those neighborhoods because of the qualities that they provided, being in town, being close to downtown, and all of the amenities. And I know that we're a growing community, and what we're doing now is, rather than the, the explosive growth being directed outside of the urban service area where the infrastructure doesn't exist, we're encouraging more urban infill, where we don't have to pay for the infrastructure. But what that is doing, as we see here again, is having a tremendous adverse impact on neighborhoods where people have invested, they've lived for years, they, when they bought those properties, never could have imagined, in their wildest dreams, that this kind of development would be proposed for their neighborhood. In many instances, they're blindsided by the development, they're not asked for their input or recommendations about what they would like to see. And so I, I think, Commissioner Ziffer, you, you kind of hit on it in your remarks, we've got to start to have a broader conversation about how we protect our neighborhoods as this community grows. I just don't want to see another neighborhood coming before us, having to fight for their existence on property that they have invested in and have raised families there, and many want to retire there, and, and they just don't know what the future portends for them and their families. It, it's just not fair. And so I think as soon as possible, we need to begin to have those kinds of conversations, and certainly include neighborhoods, let them know, you know, what's coming, what they can expect. Certainly ask for their input into what they want for their neighborhood and how we can accommodate the growth that's occurring in this city. That needs to happen sooner than later, so we don't find ourselves in this situation again, you know? And so I, I would suggest, Mr. Mayor, that we, we have staff, maybe prepare a workshop, or we have some type of work group to begin to address this issue, because it's gonna continue to come. We, we are gonna continue to be confronted with this as we encourage urban infill, and our established historic neighborhoods are threatened by this kind of development. And I hate to use the word threatened, because I, I think that development and, and our protection of neighborhoods can coexist, but we've got to have a plan for how that happens. It can't be piecemeal like this. And then we have another neighborhood come in a month, or in six months, or in a year with these same types of issues. And so that, that would be my recommendation. On this, when, when Wayne showed me the rendering of the wall, you know, I voted for it in the IA meeting. I will be the first to introduce a motion to repeal that, if that's what it takes to get us off of that issue. I don't know that any of us wants something that ugly and obtrusive in any of our historic neighborhoods. I, I mean, I certainly don't. And so, so that's an issue that, that we need to address. And so, you know, I, I think going forward, you know, certainly, we, we need to address the non-conforming uses in this neighborhood and other neighborhoods throughout the city of Tallahassee. But we've, we've got a larger issue here that we've got to address in a holistic manner so that we don't continue this piecemeal approach and having, you know, neighbors have to come and literally fight for their existence and, and be concerned about an investment that, that, you know, they made years ago or may want to make in the future and, and just, you know, are afraid of, of what development's gonna do to these neighborhoods that we say we cherish, and that is one of the major amenities of our community. So I, I am, I'm really conflicted on this, because I'd like to see the development go forward, but because of the concerns that the neighborhood has, has addressed, and the fact that we don't have a comprehensive way of looking at these kinds of issues for neighborhoods throughout our community, I, I can't support this item this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Maddox.[1636.66][1636.66](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a lot of respect for my colleague, but I disagree. I'm just confused on fight for their very existence. So we took an EPA Superfund site that was owned by the state and was gonna be capped into a parking lot. We invested forty million dollars into a world-class park. We got testimony tonight that property values have tripled. Regardless of what decision we make here, I don't think we're doing anything that's making this neighborhood fight for its very existence. We're not putting some kind of noxious use in, in there that your property values are all gonna go in the toilet, and you're not gonna be able to sell your homes. So I, I'm sorry, that's just, facts are facts. Regardless of what we decide on here tonight with this property, for me, I, I thought the wall was a bad idea, I vocalized that. I think we, there's a way to do it better. I don't see a, a problem with an RFP to get ideas, to have design standards, that Architectural Review Board would have to, to approve, that we would all have to listen to and see here today, and then make a decision as to whether or not it's something that is a value add or, or a value detract, not only for your neighborhoods, but for the entire community. And we make those decisions every day here, and sometimes they seem wildly unpopular and everybody loves them later, and I've, I've lived through several of those. But overall, I don't think we've done any great disservice to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Commissioner. So a question on, there's a lot of green space around here, and I think that is a real additive to an in-city neighborhood, that you can still have that kind of, that kind of green appointments. The question for me would be, what protections or what steps would this commission need to take if we were to say, because my guess is, is if you get a development here, and this is what most folks assume, the pressure builds for anything buildable around it will eventually find itself on the market due to market pressures for redevelopment, for building, and my guess is, is that commissions after us will make a very solid case for why it would make sense for redevelopment in an in-city neighborhood, and they might be right to do so. But my question would be, outside of this site, if, if we were to, to move forward on this, would it be a conservation easement? easement? What is the highest level of protections a government might be able to offer for public lands, parklands, that would prevent it from being potentially redeveloped in the future? And I know in the private sector, there is conservation easement. I don't know what that looks like in our case.
City Attorney, you want to try to, from a legal perspective?
You all can also come back on this. I'll throw it out there.
Oftentimes, there are dedications of public land that can be worked into the deal, but...
But this would be land that is not a part of this, right? This is just, I'm thinking of outside of this green slot that we're talking about, that you've got the lines around.
Right.
The other two major slots, obviously Cascades Park, we just created that, so that's not a part of it. But the other two major slots of land, including the...
We'll come back to that.
Okay, so I want to just lay that out because I think that, for me, if I were someone in the area, that would be a concern going forward is, is if this piece of land can be looked at as potential for redevelopment. And I do think there are arguments to be made as to why it makes sense, as well as why I'd be uncomfortable with moving in that direction. But certainly for the other pieces, and I said this in my briefing earlier, that there are, this is going to be, I'm hearing Commissioner Richardson and agree that we've had this tension in a number of in-city and inner-city neighborhoods. And my guess is, is everywhere where we're seeing a boon in redevelopment, particularly in the urban core, which is where we have tried to impress upon people. I mean, we've restricted opening up new lots. We have resisted expanding the urban services area. We have adopted new policies that incentivize growth in the urban core of the city. So I'm not going to betray those, that thinking now. Those were deliberate policy decisions made by this body and the county that's gotten us to this point. That tension's going to continue. If that's the case, I think it'll probably be a case-by-case basis where we say, you know what, this is a step too far. It destroys or disrupts the character of an area that we want to preserve. And I think it's probably going to be more of a dance of art than it is going to be one of science. And then frankly, if this were one of just science, and we were to look at it sheerly as an in-city neighborhood, we probably would all be for a level of redevelopment and construction in these areas because that's what you advocate in in-city development. I am willing to go down this road of seeing what options exist, partly because it seems like there are a couple of, one, there are additional steps before a final trigger is pulled. Two, there are some protections that are built into this, particularly with the ARB, that I think ought to give a lot of us comfort, that whatever would come forward wouldn't be something that would be completely out of the character of this area, of this neighborhood, that we wouldn't want to see. I'll cosign your comment, Commissioner. I don't even know how big this triangular piece is, but, you know, it has significance, and it's always a nice confusing part when I get to that point in the roadway. But I agree. I mean, I think there's some value to it. I do think we would want to address and have more conversation on the, on the point of entry, the egress from, from this site. I don't, I'm sorry. Yeah, from, from, from the site, because trying to figure out what that looks like, what that feels like. And then this gray piece, which is a government use, which I also have to assume is also out of its zoning.
Substation.
The substation's out of its zoning, or is because it's government use, we can be anything?
No, it's out of its zoning.
Okay.
Yes, legally nonconforming.
Legally nonconforming. And is that a piece of what we're talking about, or no?
Yes, I'm recommending that you bring that into conformity as well, when you're doing the comp plan amendments.
Got it. Would you do me a favor of just outlining what the steps would be going for, so that we know if we approved you all moving forward with a comp plan or amendment? What are the, what are the steps?
What we will try to do is catch it up to the existing amendment cycle that's moving forward now. Barry, do the public meetings begin in January?
Public meetings for this begin prior to that. Our first public workshops begin in November.
Okay, so we start having public meetings in November. You'll have some throughout January, February, March, April, and then you'll transmit to DEO, and then July is the effective adoption hearing date.
Got it. If I could, and I know this is, if it is required as a comprehensive plan to include greater protections on the remaining green space, probably to include Cascades Park, I would be interested in knowing what that process is. As I said before, I do think the question, you know, the obvious question for me is, at what point does this become a tipping point? And then it makes an argument for every other green space in the area to be ripe for development or redevelopment. And there are aspects of this area that I think we ought to work very, very hard to, to preserve into the future. Commissioner Miller, I know you had a question, followed by Commissioner Ziffer and Commissioner Richardson.
On this map that's up here right now, if you look at Cascades Park and you look at the electric building complex there, and just to the west of that, is that part of Cascades Park?
Yeah, so we continue the trail over to the Connector Bridge through this area. So we would consider that a part of parkland. Now, you do have a parking area that serves the substation, so we'll need to look at that a little closer and future use of that. So we definitely need to kind of address all of those together when we're looking at the substation.
Well, all of that, all that, that property there, that green property is already utilized, correct?
It's parked, some of it.
Wasn't utilized until just last month.
Well, I mean, it is now, though, as of today, it is. Okay. And what you're saying, it's open, is it nonconforming too?
This is the existing land.
By the way?
Yeah.
I mean, I know what it looks, I know what's there. I mean, I know that it's got...
It's designated as central urban.
And, okay, it's got the, it's got the parking lot, it's got the trail, parking lot and the trail, but it is, as I can, in my mind, 100% done as far as what the use is. I don't see it reversing from being the trailhead, the way you get to the bridge or any of that. So when you're moving on this, you need to make, I mean, if that's, that should, is that allowable, that parking lot? Is that allowable in that?
Yes. Offices are allowed in central urban. So we'd again, have to go look at the zoning, make sure it's conforming with the zoning. So it's a two-step process.
Right, I think so. I'm a little upset about the, all these quandaries about zoning and incompatibility with land use and all that. I think that I would like to reiterate my colleagues' interest in looking at protections over land, like, for example, the actual Myers Park itself. I never actually thought this was part of the park. I mean, considering the use that's on there and the number of impervious, I am a little bit worried about the impervious that might end up there and what you're going to do with all the water and so on. And so that said, but be clear, that is not what we're talking about tonight. We are not talking about what's going to happen on that property. And my other, because that, what we're talking about is beginning a conversation on what's going to happen on that property. That's what we're talking about. We're not talking about any decisions that have been made. We're talking about decisions that's going to be made over the next year. And so there's going to be plenty of opportunity for discussion, especially with that ARB overlay. The, the last thing that I wanted to say is this. The Knight Foundation recently spent, financed a trip for me, Commissioner Daley, and County Administrator to go to Denmark to find out why, what works in Denmark and what doesn't. That was a visit to Copenhagen. One of my experiences in Copenhagen, where everybody basically lives in a condominium type, owned or rented, one or the other, but entirely, what this would look like if it was in Copenhagen, where the people are the happiest in the world, I might want to add, that's why they sent us there, would be that there would be townhouses all the way around the edge of this property with entrances on each side to the park that would be in the middle. Well, as we visited these folks and looked at their, you know, how they had arranged and what their architecture was and so on, I had the occasion to go from the road into the center, into the park. And I have to tell you that the difference in the noise level was something that I don't think anybody could appreciate without having experienced it. I walked from a road in the middle of town, basically, to a quiet, it was as though it was 50 miles out of town. That convinced me, and that was before we had this issue on the table, but that convinced me of the ability for a building to block sound. So I don't think you should just throw this idea out as not worthy of consideration. For one thing, the wall only does a certain thing, and only protects a certain number of people. There are still impacts from noise in the entire neighborhood. So I think that we're going to have a very interesting discussion, and that we may have opportunities here that we haven't considered before. So that's where we're at tonight, and that's why we're having this discussion.
Commissioners, I don't want to interrupt what might be more of a vigorous conversation. We are at the point to commence with public hearings. So we're going to vacate this item.
There's a motion and a second.
There is a motion and a second. I know there are comments in the queue. If you all are okay, we'll, all right, we'll take the question. All those in favor of staff recommendations, let it, they said they're okay. Let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes four to one. Commissioners, we're now onto public hearings.
One more thing. I wanted you, I wanted to have an opportunity for Wayne Tetter to explain to everybody what the, we talked about what the conference of plan process would be. What is, and I'd like to know this too, what, you said you wanted to run an RFP along concurrently with this. How do you plan to do that?
First of all, we need to get in front of the ARB with this new direction and work with them and start crafting an RFP that addresses all the concerns that would be on the table. Then I see us trying to put it out through the public participation process for anyone to submit a proposal to follow those guidelines. So really, there could be months with no activity at all going on this site, but we really need to get in front of the ARB first and foremost to kind of start vetting this issue and working through them, and working with the Historic Preservation Officer to say, okay, what works? What doesn't work? What are the things that are on this site that we really need to focus on maybe keeping, and those that are really no significance that we need to address in other, other ways?
I'd live for you, and I know we talked about this earlier. I'm very, very concerned about this site leapfrogging what we're trying to accomplish on the other five acres. And I don't know what sequencing conversation needs to happen, but the other five acres, one is certainly, in my opinion, higher priority, and two, if I were a developer and given the choice between the two, I'm going for the easiest one. And admittedly, the site on the Cascades side is, comes with a number of restrictions, given what we know we're trying to preserve on that site. So I don't know what that means for y'all's work going forward, but I'll, you know, just say now, I'm less interested in having this project leapfrog what's at play.
Do we have to approve the RFP before you put it out?
I think just giving the general direction to do it, and then let us facilitate with the ARB what works. I think that would be the best approach to do that.
All right.
Okay, Commissioners, we've taken an action.
I wanted to ask, too, that Wayne, to the, to the extent that you can, that the neighborhood be involved in this process every step of the way. I think that's kind of what's gotten us to where we are now. That, that kind of input wasn't sought. They left thinking they had a resolution, and then something came up that they weren't involved in the decision-making process. And so I think that's kind of what got us to where we are now.
Got it.
Mr. Mayor, when you finish that item, you will need to take up item 801.
That's right.
You need to accept the report and approve an action.
Commissioners, we did have the report verbally presented. There was a motion and an acceptance. Can we get a motion? There's a motion and an acceptance on receiving the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls report.
And Authorization of Staffing of...
And obviously, the authorization requested. All those in favor, let it be known by, is there a motion?
Motion, second.
And a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioners, we're now going to open up the public hearing, beginning with item 15.01. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 15.01 is the second and final public hearing on ordinance number 16-0-17, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Chapter 10 zoning of the Tallahassee Land Development Code, amending the Lake Protection District and Cluster Development Standards, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
There are no speakers on the item, Mayor.
Commissioners, there's no speaker, and this is, speakers is the second and final. Is there a motion?
There is a motion.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioners, we're now onto item 15.02. City Attorney.
Item number 15.02 is the second and final public hearing on ordinance number 16-0-26, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Chapter 10 zoning of the Tallahassee Land Development Code, adding automotive rental use limited to passenger vehicles in the CU-45 Central Urban District, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Move acceptance.
No speakers?
No speakers. Motion and a second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Item 15.03 has been rescheduled for December the 14th. Item 15.04, City Attorney.
Item number 15.04 is a resolution number 16-R-41, is the first and only public hearing, a resolution of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, relating to community redevelopment, expanding boundaries of the Greater Frenchtown Southside Community Redevelopment Area to include an expansion area. Providing for Community Redevelopment Agency will be the redevelopment agency in the expansion area and providing an effective date.
Commissioner Miller.
I would like to have, I have a question of staff on this. It says here that staff is requesting the City Commission authorize the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement with the Leon County Administrator establishing the millage rate parity between the city and the county. I'd like to know if parity is a percentage or a number?
It's actually a number. And you may recall that parity now is required by the statute for both the city and the county that would invest into a CRA.
So this is really statute language that you're putting here?
Right. It's statutory, but the county has requested that we do an agreement that memorializes both TIF parity and also the final expiration date of the CRA, that it remained the same until it's taken up formally by the city and the county.
So the current expiration date of the Frenchtown Southside CRA is June of 2030?
Correct.
Okay, so that's not a change.
No, that will not change.
But this area will also, it will be, it will be joining its pal across the street, correct?
Correct, and it will expire at the same time.
All right, that sounds fair. Thank you.
Although the parity piece is different, or is the same as previous?
Well, previously, the statute didn't require TIF parity, and the county invests a higher amount than the city into this specific district. But the statute was amended about three years ago, and now it requires TIF parity. The county has requested that we do an agreement that memorializes that.
Got it. And it does nothing to the vote chair for the city and the county representatives?
No, not at all, no.
Got it. Commissioners, any additional questions? Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of questions. Roxanne, when, I think the last time this came before the CRA, Commissioner Dozier had asked about some additional area being included in this. Is that a part of this recommendation, or what is the status of it?
No, she actually asked us to take a separate look at the area behind the lots that you're including. We've already started that process, and we'll be going back to the CRA board with a report on that. It is not included in this.
Did we vote on that? Did we vote to do that, or is that just a request?
You asked us to look at it, and you voted on asking...
What does "look at it" mean? I mean, looking at it requires a four-year analysis.
No, no, no. One of the things we have to do is, we have to do a finding of necessity. Before we can even start that process, the CRA board asked us to look at the parcels behind the stuff that we're including right now, and we've taken a look at that. We'll go back to the board with a report and let you know whether or not we're recommending that we start that process.
Okay. The other question that I had is, these areas, this area, once it's approved, will those businesses then be immediately eligible for CRA funds?
Yes, that's correct.
They will be.
Any additional?
I, I, I'm, well, I have some concerns about that because it seems that those businesses that have, that are already in the area and that have been contributing, now they're competing with this area that's just coming into the CRA.
Well, one way to look at that is that if the businesses in the new area are included in the CRA and they do improve, they'll be adding a greater amount of TIF over time. That money will also be available to everyone in the CRA district. But in order to include these parcels, this is how we do it.
Commissioner Miller.
Commissioner Miller.
Well, one thing I wanted to say about that is that up until now, the CRA stopped on one side of the street, and the other side of the street was basically left out and held back, if you could think of that. And so while there have been opportunities to do facelifts on one side of the street, those opportunities were not shared on the other side. So in this case, those people were, you know, they're getting renovations and all this sort of stuff on one side, and the other people couldn't. So they were sort of holding back the people that were getting the benefit even just by the fact that they couldn't move forward themselves. And so I think that was the thinking in the original idea that, remember, because you can see that it's just the people fronting on the street. And we actually had a question as to why they weren't even included before, and that's kind of how we got to the point where they were, the question was sent to Roxanne.
Commissioner Ziffer.
Commissioners, I'm enthused by the fact that, for the most part, most of our meeting today has been preoccupied by, I think, real positive changes, while some might object, to an area south of the CSX railroad tracks. We're about to, as the amount of money and the effort and the improvements to FAMUway, and now we're talking about allowing the other side of Monroe Street to participate in the CRA. We're doing some things that I think probably a few years from now, we're going to see some really positive changes that we've all talked about. So Commissioner Richardson, I appreciate your concerns, but I think this, what's the term, you know, rising tide?
Lift all boats.
Lift all boats. And this is, I think, where we are.
And he's right about that.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments on this item? Right, seeing none? All those in favor, let it be known by saying...
One minute, just let the record reflect. There is, there is no public speakers on this item.
I'm sorry. There are not?
There are not.
Okay, are not, no public speakers on this item. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roxanne, I appreciate it. Commissioners, we're now at the point of un-agenda speakers. Treasury Clerk, are there any speakers?
We have one speaker, Mayor, Erwin Jackson.
And you have some technical assistance here, please.
Thank you. That's a big feat. I've never signed it. Don't do that.
Yeah, I got it by myself. I'm impressed. Okay, Erwin Jackson, 1341 Jackson Bluff. This morning, I met with the judge, three other, four other attorneys to try to help Scott figure out where he lives. You know you're in trouble when it takes four judges, four attorneys and a judge to figure out your residency. I can look at the commissioners up here, and with the exception of Scott, they all know where you live, and I'm glad each of you live in a city. Here's what the problem is. The house here is on Metalwood Court. That's where is Scott's home, but it's not within the city limits. He says it's a vacant house, but as you can see, it looks pretty nice for a vacant house.
All right, pictures.
Yeah, it's got some dining room furniture. Looks beautiful to me. We've got a couple rooms, and all these pictures were on Facebook and on the internet. Here's a bedroom. Scott has two sons. It looks like there's trophies and looks like a son's bedroom. I have two sons. Here's another son's bedroom. Trophies from high school. This is supposed to be a vacant house, but you don't see how that's going to be. This is a picture that was posted on the internet. We got Scott and his wife doing some kind of jazzercise or some kind of exercise in their off-hours. This is being done in their personal home outside the city limits. This looks like, and I believe it's Scott's niece wanted to have a, her wedding in their backyard. And I think that was very nice of Scott and his wife. The problem, they did open up their home, and it was occurred outside the city limits on Metalwood Court. Here's a picture we got out of the Democrat. It shows Scott, his wife, his son. Everybody's happy. They pulled a fast one on the city. They live in the county, and he's a city commissioner. The judge made a decision today that he doesn't want to deal with this. He wants to throw it back to the city commission. I guess Scott, your problem, you're going to have to deal with it, Commissioners. I found out you don't have any procedures to do this. It's never been done before. What happened a few years ago, and I saw ex-Marks, ex-Mayor Marks here, remember, he lived in the county. He said he rented a little space for a couple months during the election, and once he was elected, this commission made a decision, we'll annex in his house. So I guess the question is, we're going to follow the charter, or we should change it and say, you can run if you're in a county, and if you win, we'll annex your house in. The other option, last week, I told you that Scott's dad...
Excuse me, your time's expired.
Scott's dad had given him a house. I have the warranty deed here. Scott said he didn't know it.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
But he has. And last thing, you, I can tell you the name Scott is going to say he now lives at 235 Sinclair Road.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
That's the new address within the city. He's embarrassing himself, he's embarrassing you.
Tom has expired, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Can the city attorney, I know there was a, is there any action we can take tonight to just put this to rest? What is, what is the process going forward?
When the city attorney returns, he will be providing you with options and recommendations because the court did rule today that under our charter, it is your authority and responsibility to make a determination as to the qualifications and election of members of the city commission.
So the fact that a person duly elected, election certified, sworn into the office, that isn't assumed in the process of...
Well, it, the charter presents an opportunity to, to, in a sense, contest that, and so if that, if a contest is made, then it's up to this commission to decide those qualifications.
Got it.
And the court determined that this is to occur after the commencement of the, of the term in office, which will not be until after, on November 21st.
Commissioner Miller.
Well, I wanted to ask Commissioner Maddox how he manages to get his teenagers to keep their rooms so clean? And I also wanted to ask you why your photos would appear on the internet of the inside of your home, if that were your home.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. As you know, we have been attempting to sell that house for quite some period of time. We've dropped the price. We've done everything Realtors ask us to do. By the way, there is absolutely no requirement that you can't have two homes. You just have to reside in, your residence has to be where you're elected to be, and mine is and has been. So the fact that, that we have a house for sale that's outside the city limits has no bearing on anything. And Mr. Jackson is here because he, he lost in court this morning. He continues to try to find remedies that he cannot get at the ballot box. Mr. Jackson or his candidates have lost now three times, four times. And I venture to say he'll lose four more if he continues going forward. And he knows that, but think about for a moment, so what you saw now is, he put in the public domain, I guess, my niece's wedding pictures, pictures of my wife and I from years ago, gave my 83-year-old father's home address. My elderly parents gave their home address. It's unbelievable to me, and I've spoken to him about this before. His facts, he knows his facts are wrong. He doesn't care about that. But at some point, the price of public service shouldn't be this. It shouldn't be that. You shouldn't, we shouldn't have to put our families up there. And I tell you what, Mr. Jackson, you want to take all the concern out of it. You brag a lot that you're a multimillionaire. Pay the price, write a check. That too can be your house, and you can do whatever you wish with it.
I'll give you 400,000.
Well, there you have it. There you have it. And so I think we've gotten our answer.
Commissioners, are there...
Sharing of ideas?
We are on sharing of ideas.
So I've talked with our acting city attorney about this. There was an article that, and I'm not sure how I got this, but the City of Gainesville and other municipalities around the state have done this, where we had a conversation probably a year or two ago about limiting or not allowing smoking in our parks. And there was the discussion that the state has a preemption, but the City of Gainesville, for example, is discussing passing an ordinance that's not going to allow smoking in their parks. So I just wanted to put out there that this may come back before us again for discussion, and I'm just hoping that maybe we could make that consideration, but it is going to come back up because Cassandra's looking into it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to go back to the issue of, well, what we dealt with in terms of the Myers Park neighborhood, because I think it is a broader issue and where I would respectfully disagree with your comment about a case-by-case basis. I think there are some things that this commission should establish as, as things that we value when it comes to our neighborhoods, and, because I think we owe it to, you know, people who have invested, you know, their lives and livelihoods in those neighborhoods, to give them some sense of comfort that, that their neighborhood won't be next, you know, where there are green spaces that might be in or around their neighborhood and someone's looking at potential development. I mean, everybody recognizes that this city is going to grow. I mean, even the people in Myers Park, they are not opposed to development, but I think we need to give them, because of the investment that they've made, some comfort that, you know, we, we're not going to have development run amok. I mean, I'm not opposed to development. The city is growing. We, we're going to have to have development, but we need to, to, to take a position, I think, as a commission on those things that we value and protect in our city, and certainly our neighborhoods are one of those, in that, like I said, I don't know if we need to have a workshop or a work group or something that this commission says to the public that we've, we do value our neighborhoods and we're not going to tip the balance now to let development encroach on those neighborhoods and, and impact the investment, adversely impact the, the investment that individuals have made over the years. And so I, it just seems to me that, that we would have some type of overall strategy for how to make that happen, rather than, you know, each individual, each individual neighborhood having to come before us and make a case or to argue against time after time. I mean, like I said, we've seen three or four already in the two years that I've been on the commission. There are a couple that are, that are teed up. Lafayette Park will be coming. The, the area around Florida Avenue, they're going to be coming. And so I just think we need to give people some kind of comfort that, that we still do value our neighborhoods, and there are certain things that, now, these folk, you know, they have the benefit of the Architectural Review Board. They may have that protection, but other neighborhoods won't have that. But they need to have some comfort that, that we will do whatever we can to protect them and their investment in their neighborhoods.
No, I hear, I hear that, Commissioner. I think I'd be interested in whatever structure you might, you might suggest for how this conversation goes forward, but I know it would be very, very difficult to have a single-issue philosophy that would apply everywhere that there is this development pressure. In fact, we can anticipate it almost anywhere we have invested in any part of this city for its redevelopment, that the economic pressure is going to come to the area. And, you know, Myers Park is lucky in the sense that they've actually got a lot more green space than most in-city areas. I mean, overwhelmingly more. And the, the idea that anyone, certainly in inner-city neighborhood, is going to be held sacrosanct from what our market related, and not just market-related pressures, these are pressures that we created for ourselves as well. I mean, I was, one of the early days of being on this commission, every complan cycle then, there seemed to be three or four a year. The boundaries of the USA were extending, were extending, we were leapfrogging, extending because everyone's saying, we need more lots, we need more lots. And we were, it was insatiable, and we met every one of those requests. And then there was a philosophical shift that said, we want to do as much as we can to focus development and redevelopment into the urban core. And we created policies that then went about the business of making that happen. And I think we're not dealing with what is a very real tension of, you know, when does, when does, when do we jump the pond? And then, now, we no longer have what is beautiful and sacred about some of these areas. Now it's just anywhere America. And I think that that, that's why I said, I think it's much more art than science, that we'll have to make that decision. So that long strip that, of, of green space that's across and sort of is between some of those shotgun houses and some of the more developed houses in my, I think that that ought to be preserved. And maybe there's a future commission that says, this is ripe land for redevelopment, and they'll have to debate that, but I doubt that we'll have unity, complete and total unity, on a policy that sort of holds those areas to what they look like today. I think it'll be challenging, and, and I know that, I'm probably of a mind that it would be much more individual in nature, but, but I welcome, you know, that conversation, and maybe we can get with staff on how we would structure it. Commissioner Miller had a comment, and then Commissioner Ziffer.
Right. I, well, first of all, Commissioner Richardson, I'd like to hear your ideas for how you'd go about doing this, because basically, this is the job. What we do is, more than anything really, is address rezonings and address all the, we do have a process that this goes through. We have the comprehensive plan process, which is going to give folks, and that's why I kept trying to emphasize that tonight, that's an entire, basically a year process, where a public input, public input, public workshops for us. And so that's what will happen with this particular piece of property. It's a comprehensive plan change. That means we have workshops. The county has a workshop. We have joint workshops with them. And so this is going to be thoroughly vetted through that process, which we've already established. The rezoning is our, the secondary effort. My, I have a concern about the fact that we have so much zoning that isn't consistent with overlaying comprehensive land, planned land use, and, and that's a, and the fact that so many people are thrown into noncompliance because that is, if your home is damaged, you cannot rebuild it. You, I mean, and that's a pretty major issue for people, especially after we've just had a storm that could have done that kind of damage to these folks' homes. So, but in the rezonings that have been so controversial, where the people have come out, one was rezoning of a piece of property on Monroe Street and Tharp. I mean, I'm sorry, but that's where that type of business belongs, and we, all we can do, we can probably address buffering more than we have. And so that's one of the items for discussion, but nobody really can expect, when they live a block away from Monroe Street, they can't really expect that there will never be any changes along Monroe Street. So that's just, and in the case of the one in, down south of town, it's a 40-acre piece that's privately owned, and it came before us, that's as it should have. It comes before us, we take input, but that's what we do. That's what we do, and it's not going to change. We're going to continue to get folks coming to us because that's what they, that's the job they elected us to do. So you've only been here two years, but it isn't going to stop. Every, it will continue every time there's a rezoning, every time there's a land use change. One thing that is interesting over time is that the comprehensive plan amendment cycles used to be, as, as the mayor alluded to, endless. I mean, there weren't four, there were only two, but it seemed like four, and there would be 20 amendments to the plan. Well, now, you know, you have one speaker to 20 or five or seven amendments that might be proposed. I mean, the, the demand for land use changes at that level have become much, much less controversial over time, and I think that's a good thing, that we're kind of getting there from here. We only started this in 1990. It's been 20, now 25 years, and finally, most of it is settling out, but we'll definitely have the opportunity, I think, in the future, and it, we do honor our in-town neighborhoods, but I don't want anybody to be subject to losing their home because it's damaged, because they're noncompliant, and I don't want anybody, I do think we could spend a little bit more time talking about how we buffer residential areas against the adjacent commercial development. talking about how we buffer residential areas against the adjacent commercial development.
Just quickly, because it occurred to me during the conversation we were trying to move through to get to public hearing. We have, and I'm not sure if this is the right time to talk about it, but I'll throw it out there. A couple years ago, and I've forgotten what context, but there was conversation about city-owned land. Not only city-owned land that is not being utilized, but as I recall Parks and Recreation, we have over 100 different parcels that we consider part of Parks and Recreation, of which a significant number of them are not being utilized in any form or fashion. And some of them, because we have to keep them up, because we like our parcels kept fairly clean. We're mowing them and probably cleaning them, and all those things cost money. So it seems to me that maybe we should start to have a conversation about, because I know there's some land in Frenchtown we read about that there's some interest in, city-owned land and also all the Parks and Rec land that we have. I don't want to cause any problems for anybody, but there may be some things that, just quite frankly, don't make sense anymore. So if it could be, and I'm not asking for a vote or anything, but maybe staff could start to have a conversation with all of us about what are we going to do with all these, and how long do we keep them? And is there a reason to do that? We could do that.
Yeah. You know, we're also not the first community to deal with this tension of redevelopment and in-city neighborhood pressure. It might be worth it that the planning staff might be able to provide for us some kind of a template for how to walk through this conversation. Maybe some model pieces of policy, ordinance, whatever. Commissioner Maddox.
Just briefly, this is no new conflict. In fact, for, for years ago, we started looking at neighborhood border districts because you had the problem of land use differences on the borders of neighborhoods. So what was appropriate in, you know, is it okay for a CPA firm and not a house? And we dealt with that around Lafayette Park a lot. So I'm confident we can tackle it.
Y'all did add it, by the way, neighborhood boundary.
Sure did.
Right.
Yes, we did, and nobody's using it, which makes me upset.
Right.
So we should definitely be pushing that. I know, I understand. There's one piece. It's a fabulous designation. And we need to be looking at it more.
And the other great tool is the plan unit development process and the use of design standards on your bigger parcels that will alleviate most of the tension points between neighbors and those that seek to develop property. Because it's, you would always get people that are afraid of what it could be, not what the intention is for it to be. And there's no mechanism other than a agreement, a growth management agreement or the plan unit development process. So either one of those are good. I wanted, on sharing of ideas, tell folks that next Thursday night, we have the Capital City Youth Services Sleepout, where to bring attention to what some, some folks in our community deal with on a daily basis. And we sleep in cardboard boxes. And you learn a lot about CCYS and their efforts. So I want to invite the commission, and anyone that wants to take part in that, it's a great event.
Wait, Commissioner Ziffer, followed by Commissioner Miller.
You reminded me of something, and I, that's funny, that's actually not a very good joke what I'm about to say. Alzheimer's Project, our walk, yes, I'm sorry. Our walk is November 6th, Sunday, November 6th. And you can go to alzheimer'sproject.org and learn about it. My wife and I are the co-chairs of the event, and it should be substantial. It's a big fundraiser. So those of us that are at my age, we either had parents or we have friends that are unfortunately starting to experience dementia or Alzheimer's. By the time 2020 rolls around, 1 in 5 Floridians over the age of 65 will either have dementia or Alzheimer's. That's a big number. And the Alzheimer's Project helps those folks that are the caregivers, because in many cases, those folks are the ones that are really under the duress and stress. So any one that wants to participate, go to alzheimer'sproject.org, and you can learn how to form a team or join mine.
Commissioner, do you have any remember when and what time and where this is going to be held?
Yes, it is at Cascades Park. And as I recall, it's at noon, but it may be 1 o'clock. I have looked at my calendar lately because I just finished your walk. And that was a big effort.
Wear purple?
Yes, purple is the color.
Commissioner Miller.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say yay, yay. Thanks to all the support from the entire, all the staff support, the real men's support, the mayor for coming in and helping lead the parade.
As we get everyone lost, yes.
Yeah. It was a real task to try to lead around 7,000 people. So that was great. But I want to shout out a big thanks to everybody that was involved. And then, and I'd like to invite all of you to come and watch the mayor and me jump off the building tomorrow, off the-
Don't do it.
-double tree in, for the sake of, it's the over-the-age project, for the safe of folks transitioning from, from, it's a reentry program and fundraiser for the organization that is very-
You say reentry program?
Yes.
Okay.
Basically, you got something to say about that, too. We're reentering the world from the sky would be the hope that we do make it. But anyway, that is a great fundraiser that's happening tomorrow evening.
You're rappelling down the building?
Yes.
Over the double tree?
Not reentering.
I'm in.
Right.
I'm signed up.
Well, good.
Are you going to show?
I've done it off the Capitol and-
You did not, really?
And a helicopter at 100 feet, so I'm in for this.
Okay, okay. All right, then include Commissioner Maddox.
Tomorrow, following our public IA meeting, 3:00 PM. Join us. Commissioners, anything else for a sharing of ideas? Seeing none, meaning adjourned.
Okay.
Students, more than 700,000 will be victims of sexual abuse, leaving hidden scars that have lifelong effects. Female survivors of sexual abuse are three times more likely to drop out of school, to develop mental health issues, to abuse drugs and alcohol, and are four times more likely to develop eating disorders.